Terrific. We're joined here at the first subcommittee meeting for the Economic Development Committee. With committee members, I know LeVar Click is there, as well as Jose Delgado. And I am joined here in City Hall with Zaida Govan, as well as Caterie Walsh. We have two quick updates on the Economic Development Committee. One is a permit, the other is an historical district designation. So we're going to start off with the permit for DM Marijuana Dispensary. Here in Springfield. And we are joined here by the petitioner, Ms. Hernandez, as well as her counsel, Mr. Brian Shea. And if you can hear me, Ms. Hernandez, if you'd like just to greet yourself and say hello, introduce yourself.
Hi. Hello, good afternoon. I'm here.
And I see that you are joined by counsel, Mr. Shea. Are you there, Mr. Shea?
Good morning, Counselor. Thank you for having us this morning.
Terrific. Well, I'm told that this is an informational hearing, an update on the permit. So Attorney Shea, why don't you kick it off and give us the counsel in this committee? An update on where you are in the process and to address the Economic Development Committee.
Thank you very much. And again, thanks for your time, everybody, this morning. If you're not aware, we were awarded a we were the lucky recipient of a host community agreement at our original location in round two of the cannabis licensing in Springfield. And our original location was located at the hall since the revitalization or the redevelopment of that particular site. We were requesting that our host community agreement be relocated to 337 East Columbus Avenue. Which would be one of the first locations that anyone entering Springfield would see coming off the highway. We began the process of relocating that host community agreement to that location in July of 2022. We submitted our request with the information requested by the Law Department. And we received support by both the Forest Park Civic Association and the South End Civic Association. We met with them, explained what we were going to do. We received unanimous support from both. They seem very enthusiastic to see that particular piece of property. Get some attention. And then again, that is the first piece of property that somebody coming into downtown Springfield would probably see. And it's been vacant for some fifteen to twenty years. And it's in dire need of some attention.
Attorney Shea, could you give me a little more detail? You get off the ramp coming up ninety-one north and where exactly is three thirty-seven? It's where it's before. What's it right next to?
So that's the, as you're getting off and you are going past the South End Bridge. It's going to be the first structure on your right. It now looks like vacant office space and the abandoned restaurant.
Oh, it's that building with the glass facade with five or six offices there?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, okay, understood. And so you have, you, the petitioner has, am I correct, a lease there at that?
No, we have that property under agreement to purchase. And we are just waiting for the relocation of the HCA in order to consummate the purchase.
So then if you, if you, if you did get the license to go there in the part of the permit, you would then close on that property?
Correct. And as part of our application process, we submitted the purchase and sale agreement slightly redacted for the review by the city.
Okay. And how much have you invested in this process so far?
It's a tremendous amount of money. We are currently paying a fee to the owner to extend our purchase there on a recurring basis.
How much is that? If you can disclose, I don't know if you can, but it
I don't think it would be fair to everybody to do that.
Okay, yeah.
I don't have an issue disclosing it on behalf of DM, but I'm not sure the owner would appreciate us.
You don't have to do that then.
But I'll tell you though, it is, it's tens of thousands of dollars. And it's recurring on a regular basis. And it's very unfortunate. Again, so we've been into this now for a year and a half. Submitted all the information. We were requested to provide a traffic study, which we undertook and completed very quickly. And then after submission of that, we were requested to do some engineering work, which we did. That's been approved by the VPW in the fall of last year. And upon completion, we circled back to the Law Department and said, can you give us a status? And at that point, we were communicating with Attorney Ken Shea in the Law Department. And he informed us at that point that it was no longer within his jurisdiction and that he was not have anything to do with this. And I asked him if he could just re you know, reaffirm what he had represented at a prior subcommittee meeting, not yours, but another subcommittee, subcommittee meeting. That this engineering work was the only thing that was required. And he, at that point, indicated that he wasn't quite sure. And at the point where he told us that it was just the engineering work that needed to be done, he was only guessing. So I don't know where we are. We've done everything the city has asked. Nobody is responding to us. We have a special permit that's going to be two years old in the fall of this year for that location. And, and nobody is offering us any insight as to where we are. I thought it was fair that we report back to your committee, your subcommittee, and perhaps request that we get an opportunity to report the same to the full council. To let them know that, you know, here we were requesting you give us a special permit for a reason. We've complied with all of the requirements that were essential in order to get this done. Everything the city said was needed to get this done. Even though there doesn't appear to be any regulatory authority to require these types of things for relocation. I don't think those types of scenarios are addressed in the city ordinance. We did it. And we spent a great deal of money to do it. And all we're asking for is to give us an opportunity to relocate this license to this location. So we can invest about four million dollars into revitalizing this particular parcel of land. Right now, I mean, this is the one parcel that sits right at the beginning of Springfield. And I don't think anybody is very proud of the way it looks right now. It certainly doesn't reflect what the city has to offer.
And just to refresh my memory, we have some new counselors on the line. When, when did the city council approve this permit?
I think it was October two thousand and twenty-two.
It's been a while.
And is there, is there an expiration date on that permit? How long does the permit last?
Special permits have to be periodically renewed, I believe, so.
And so just, okay. And is there any indication? I mean, if, if I could just inquire to the council, I mean, if the administration is not inclined, I mean, is that is that a possibility? I mean, they're not, it doesn't seem like they're, if they're not they have the option not to sign it. Am I correct on that or not correct?
Well, so again, we're not requesting a host community agreement. We already have one. We're requesting for it to be relocated. And all we have to, to go on is what, what the city did for Six Bricks. And based upon the press releases that came out of this administration, they seem to be very enthusiastic about getting this you know, relocated for Six Bricks very quickly. And it happened within a very short period of time. We've been at this for a year and a half. I asked Attorney Ken Shea who to contact, and he's yet to respond to me. I asked him three times over the last couple of months. Who do I, who do you want me to call to get this thing? Who do I call to find out where we are? And I've received no response.
Okay, well, counsel, we appreciate the update. And we appreciate you walking us through the process to where you are in this process. I know we have a petitioner here. I don't know if you want, wish to say a few words. You don't have to, but if you, if you wish to say a few words. You are addressing the Economic Development Committee, Ms.
Hernandez.
Hernandez. And the floor is yours. Are you unmuted?
Hi. Yes, I wasn't unmuted. I'm sorry. Basically, my my lawyers say everything what I think is, I feel so, you know, frustrated because we, we try to do everything that they request to us. And basically, we don't do anything, you know? Nobody say anything. They not respond for you know, so to the, nothing to, they not say anything to, they not respond to anything to we do, you know, and we not see anything about the, the us project. We we provide everything that they required. And I don't know now, you know, what else they need to approve my project. It's a lot of money. It's, you know, it's too much time. And I'm so sorry, my English is not really good. So that's why I prefer my lawyer talk about for me. I just want to answer, you know? So everything's on the table right now.
Well, thank you for that testimony. And I know you wanted to staff, I know you wanted to inform the committee of the status of the the application and the permit. And we appreciate your input. I see other counselors on the line, LeVar, and I see Jose. If I don't know if you guys have questions for the attorney or the petitioner, but if you, if you do.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Chair. It's really more so of a comment and or, or direction, I should say. So Attorney Shea, thank you for the update. To me, this is disappointing. At the very least, for me, a response needs to happen either, either way. If we're having someone looking to invest into our city, doing all the work that they're asked to do and sending emails and whatever it is, and then no response, that's a problem for me. So we, as, as this body, we have to, we request some answers because they're coming to us for help. So through the chair, I guess I'm asking you for direction on the next steps to help this petitioner. Thank you.
Certainly. Well, the next step would be simply to report this committee hearing and testimony to the full council. That would be our next step in the matter. We have City Councilor Delgado, Jose?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And what I would say is I agree with my colleague, Counselor Click Bruce. I mean, the fact that this, this petitioner already has a hosted community agreement. I mean, she's done all the steps that she's you know, needs to do to get to this point. And it's a simple well, simple or not simple address change, but there is precedence already set from the example that Attorney Shea set. So I don't understand what, what the issue is now. On top of that, she's got support from the neighborhood councils and, and it seems like this piece of property, I've driven by this area multiple times. It's, it's dark, it's black, and it's, you know, obviously a part of the city, we want to make sure we bring back to life and, and, and get some more, you know, more property taxes and more taxes on the tax. I mean, isn't that the whole point of, of what we're trying to do here? So so I would, you know, I would definitely agree with, you know, having this go to the full council, but also the same time as Counselor Click Bruce said, getting, getting some answers, like, you know, what are we doing here? I mean, we want to be a city that's business friendly. So I don't understand what's going on.
We have Counselor Govan here in City Council chambers. Counselor Govan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I remember, was it last year, Mr. Shea, Attorney Shea, that we met and we agreed that this was a great idea and that we needed for this to move forward. I guess, I guess my question would be, like Counselor Click Bruce said, and Counselor Delgado, what do we need to do to ensure that this happens? Is there anything that we can do besides bringing it to the full council body? Because I know that we don't have necessarily authority to say, okay, do it. But who do we need to talk to and what do we need to do? Do you know?
Well, I think that our, our purview would be to report it to the full council body. And at that point, you can
Figure out what we need to do then? Because I think, I agree with Attorney Shea and with Ms. Hernandez that they've been waiting for a very long time. I know that they're spending money on a regular basis. When I met with them last year, I, the year before, actually, they might have invested at least a million dollars into what has been happening. So I can't even imagine how much they've spent now. And, and it's just not a good look for, for our city. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We have Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to start off by saying I am a hundred percent in favor of this proposal. As are the residents of Forest Park and the Civic Association. And I would go so far to say it is disgraceful the way this petitioner has been treated. We have the opportunity to be the, to have the first female Hispanic owner in the state, besides everything else, all the other boxes that she, she checks. And besides bringing this to the full council, I think we need to know, why are there so many roadblocks to a proposal that is supported by the neighborhood, the Civic Association, they've gone through all these hoops? No one else has gone through these hoops. We've got to find out why they're doing this. And I'm, I'm sure you're going to have the full support of the council.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. There are no further comments. We appreciate the update, the status of your permit, and we appreciate you taking the time to update the committee. And we will provide a full report to the city council at our next city council meeting.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, I just, I, I want to personally apologize to the petitioner and to Attorney Shea for what's, what's going on. I don't know what it is, but like Counselor Walsh said, you know, this is, it is disgraceful. And, and I'm just really sorry that it has come to this point. But I'm hoping and I'm praying that, you know, it will be resolved in the affirmative pretty soon.
And I think Counselor Govan and I were probably a lot appreciative that a female owner is being put through so many hoops.
Thank you. And we will oh, Attorney Shea, if you have a comment?
Thank you very much. Yeah, I just wanted to mention, so myself and the petitioner would be more than happy to appear at a council meeting if there was a hearing available that we could appear to answer any questions that other counselors may have. If you wanted to schedule something before the council.
The custom is to give a report at the next council meeting. I don't know when that would be, probably next month, well, February, the next two weeks. But keep an eye on the municipal calendar. It'll be a public meeting. I believe it's the twelfth, February twelfth. So we will report at the beginning of that council meeting and as the petitioner, you're certainly welcome to show up and address the council.
Okay. And on behalf of the petitioner, I thank you for your time and I thank you for your support, too. We are undeterred in getting this completed. And I think, again, without your support, I think it would be just hard, much, much harder. Thank you again.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Now, thank you. Now, I'm to the second matter in the hearing is the isolation hospital matter. The isolation hospital was voted by the city council to have an historic district. If we have Erica Swallow on the line and Alvin, is it? As well, Alvin Allen. And and we also have a third supporter of this initiative, and I don't have his name. Oh, Bob McCarell?
I don't know who that is.
And a, and a fourth. But why don't we start with Erica Swallow? If you can, Erica, give us the, the committee just a brief update of where we were, where we are, and where we're going.
Yes, Erica Swallow, president of the Springfield Preservation Trust. I think Alvin will end up being the one to give the big update here, but as an advocate for the isolation hospital, local historic district. We were involved with putting together the original report and for its significance. And that process went from the end of twenty twenty-two all the way through to last year in October, when it came to city council for a final second vote to make it a local historic district. At that committee, Attorney Ken Shea expressed a lot of concern regarding legal issues he was bringing up and risks the city should take. So city council actually was, sorry, it might have been the meeting right before that. City council ended up sending this to the Economic Development Committee to go over this. You all delved into, I believe it was potentially two meetings, but it was definitely at least one meeting. Dove into with the attorney from Vibra Hospital. What were the concerns here? The, the, the original owner, the owners themselves never came to any meetings at all. So it became a situation where the city was representing the owners quite a bit in all of these meetings. And then it came out in press that the city actually is aiming to buy it for, I believe, a dollar. And so the city eventually, they, they have not taken ownership at this point. So it's still owned by Vibra Hospital from what I see. I don't know what the timing is, is on that. But alas, we believe, you know, this is all getting very held up from what we're seeing. On October sixteenth of last year, city council ordered the Springfield Historical Commission to redo the report, given that the legal department was concerned with the methodology for which the report was put together. They felt that only Springfield, they're interpreting chapter forty C of Massachusetts General Law to state that the Springfield Historical Commission itself needs to do the report, or they appoint someone. And they had appointed the Springfield Preservation Trust to do that, the original report. But Ken Shea was, and the legal department were saying, this seems too much, we're concerned because the historical that Springfield Preservation Trust actually has, they advocate actively as a nonprofit in the community. We don't think they're an appropriate group to run this. So that's what had transpired and why city council voted to order the Historical Commission to redo the report. We have spoken with, through our, our team, Kira Holmes, who's on the call, had spoken with Alvin Allen, who to give an update. And our understanding is that the Historical Commission has appointed the Office of Planning and Economic Development to do the report, but that OPED has not started the report for whatever reason. So I look forward to hearing maybe from Alvin on why they haven't started the report after many months. This is concerning because this, I believe, I still would need clarification on the way these steps work, the processes. But I, we believe that the if with an order, we think that this is still in committee. And it's our concern that this is going to die in committee after the one hundred twenty day mark, which would be February thirteenth. And we believe that our next step would be if, we need to understand what is OPED doing? This was an order from city council, so it should, you know, have some progress. And if it doesn't, that's a problem. But even more so, we should keep this item, this ordinance change for the local historic districts, the original item alive in committee to make sure that if OPED doesn't end up doing this report, that the city council at least has the opportunity to vote to consider a revote, final vote on the original original local historic district ordinance change, which really was on its very last leg when it could have became a local historic district last October sixteenth on that final vote, but instead it got kicked back over to the to do a second full report, which has made no progress. So that's where we are. And I will also state that the we're concerned about this property because there have been reports of people entering the property. There is a group called Urban Adventurers that has been bragging online about entering the property. They are a benign group who is, who are like, they like abandoned buildings and whatnot, but they have been actively entering the property. It's apparently in some degree unsecured. And if they're able to enter the property, then other less benign trespassers could also be entering the property. This is particularly concerning because a number of city-owned properties, the Chestnut Junior High School, the MCDI Building, all were demolished because of being unsecured, burning down. And this week, we have one seventy-four Maple Street, which just experienced a fire. We're not sure what the cause of that fire was. But this is another city-owned property that's a historic treasure for Springfield that we feel is being improperly maintained and potentially not being secured. These are assets to our city. And just as we're talking about the last building in this meeting, when you don't secure them and properly take care of them or allow for redevelopment, or make proper steps to do it yourself or put RFPs out there, then this is what happens and our assets end up, you know, being destroyed. So we're this, we are the city of homes. We're a city that prides itself on historic properties. And we're looking for an update on the isolation hospital local historic district redo report. It has any progress been made on that.
And with, just a couple of things. So you made a great point on securing buildings in general. You are right, that Maple Street fire is a tragedy. That's, that's a nice property over there. And we'd like to keep that going. Alvin, if you, if you, if you'd like to jump in and, and provide your insight and brief to, to the committee, feel free to do so if, if you want to dovetail onto those comments.
All right. Good morning, counselors. And good morning, Ms. Swallow. So from my understanding, again, the the process of the moving forward with the, the sorry. The historic district was, it was not ordered by the city council, but referred back to the Springfield Historical Commission. We've had, when I say we, my department, and as well as under the discretion of our chief development officer, Tim Sheen, have spoken with the commission chairman, Vincent Walsh, and requested, you know, that the commission move this matter forward. But prior to doing so, our chief, under the discretion of our chief of development officer, Tim Sheen, and as well as our counsel, Ken Shea, have advocated that we create new protocols or criteria for creating new districts. So essentially, that's where we are. We're trying to create these new protocols, but obviously with the, the planning department is currently understaffed. And, and in being so, you know, I've been working with my director, Phil Dromy, and we've, again, we've been trying to come up with criteria. And just due to the fact that, you know, of us being short-staffed, we, my director has advocated that we put it out for RFP for consultants who assist us with putting together new criteria. And so that's where we are currently in the process.
And, and just to be clear, just, it's exact, where exactly is the petition right now? That it's, it's, it's on the agenda that could be placed on the Ms. Swallow, if you could just clarify that for the committee, what it's, 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 what committee is it in?
It's in the, so this is in the economic, it was in the Economic Development Committee when the order was it was sent back to city council and voted at that point. And I do have a copy of the order here if the planning department doesn't have a copy of it, which it does say it's an order requesting the Springfield City Historic Commission undertake an independent study for the creation of a historic district. So it wasn't a referral, it was an order. And I will note that Tim Sheen, in that final Economic Development Committee, said they had finances. And this is recorded on our municipal meetings YouTube page, if you want to go check it out. He said and stated multiple times that there is budget item, there is, they have budget for this. And I know that multiple of the counselors here were in that meeting where he stated multiple times, there is a budget for this. We have, we have it covered. We're A-OK to go. So now that we're being told it's understaffed is a big change of the narrative here. And that you're changing all of the rules of how you do a local historic district.
Now, with all due respect, this is Phil Dromy from the Office of Planning and Economic Development. You know, I, I, again, with all due respect, we're, we're not changing the rules. Where the, under the order or referral back to the city council, we are certainly willing to move forward with this. What was brought up and made very clear when this went through the first time around is there's some ambiguities with regards to how the commission moves forward with processing local historic districts. And what, what the chief development's concern are, is there should be some clear guidelines, procedures, and policies on how that is created. No one's looking at changing the rules. What we're trying to do is review ordinances that are over fifty years old and make sure that the process in which they are done is completed in a way that is fair to the property owner, as well as to who's petitioning. We have no issue with moving forward with this. And the order did not provide a timeline. We have the funding to do this and will take this place. But again, in conversations with multiple departments, there seemed to be some need for better policies and procedures on how this moves forward. That's simply what we're looking to do.
Thank you. Is Phil, is Phil still there?
I'm here.
Can you just enlighten me? Where, where exactly is it? That's what I'm trying to find. It's not, it's not on the council agenda where it's
Well, I mean, as far as I'm aware, as far as I'm aware, and I, I'm certainly going to defer to the law department with the city council, I believe once the order or referral was done, it was off the agenda of the council. I'm not, if it's still on, great. I, I just, I think once that vote was taken and the referral was referred back to the commission, the process then needed to start again. Now, the, the, the discussion was who does the report moving forward, and that's where we are. But I, but I don't believe it's still in committee, but
The, the, the discussion was who does the report moving forward and that's where we are, but I, but I don't believe it's still in committee, but I. I defer to law on that.
So, so you, it, it's, it's your opinion, I, it, it's at, it's in the Historical Commission right now?
Is it my? Well, it's, it's, it has not been formally put on the agenda, no.
Yeah, okay, I, I understand. Thank you, thank you, Phil. Thank you.
Just, just to let you know, we, we're, we're certainly aware of the, of the issues with the uh. Uh the, the, the people getting into the building, you know, uh the, as, as was noted earlier, the city is in the process, or I shouldn't say the city. The Springfield Redevelopment Authority is in the process of purchasing the building. They are aware. I guess these, these folks post online that they're inside these buildings, so we certainly are aware of it and we're doing everything we can to make sure this building is secure. Um even the Maple Streets were secured, but unfortunately people do get in, so we're working hard to make sure this building is, is, is fully. Uh secured to keep people out and to, to make sure it's protected, so.
I have a question.
Thank you. I think uh Katie has a question. Katie, if you want to.
Thank you, through the chair. Phil, I thought one of the issues with this was with the difficulties with the owner. Is that true or not?
Well, but that, I mean, I think that kind of goes away with the, with the, with the Springfield Redevelopment Authority purchasing the property. Obviously, the original owner was not in favor of the, of the creation of the district. I, I agree that they didn't, they kind of showed up late in the game, but. Um uh but again, with, with the city moving forward, or again, the Springfield Redevelopment movement forward with the. Purchase of the property, I, I think the, the, the issues with ownership kind of don't disappear, but it, it's. It's not the same order that went through it the first time.
I thought the delay was that, don't you remember the owner threatened some legal action? Was it, isn't that part of this?
Well, that was part of the reason why I think this, the city council referred it back to the Historical Commission with regards to the creation of the report. There was, there was question about who had done the report and whether it was done correctly. And through those conversations, it was determined that we, we should be taking a broader look on these policies and procedures and how we move forward with. With these to make sure they're being done correctly. And again, whatever, whatever ultimately ends up, this will be fully. Discussed in public, it'll be a, you know, this is not something we're doing behind the scenes to change any type of rules. We're just, we're just trying to make sure there's, there's policies and procedures in place.
But, but new criteria, new role, new rules, that wouldn't impact uh uh projects that are already happened or the projects that are ongoing.
No, 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 and again, I'm not, I'm not sure that, I mean, we're looking at the ordinance as well, so any changes to the ordinance will ultimately come back. Would ultimately come back to the city council as well, as well for a vote. Any change in an ordinance has to, has to get city council approval as well. And again, I think, I, I just think we're, we're, we just want to solidify some of the policies and procedures. That's, that's what we're looking to do. And but again, it's, it, this is going to be a fully open process. The, the commission will be, obviously, the Historical Commission will certainly be involved, but. But there were concerns raised in the first time around and we're, when we're trying to address those. It's, it's, you know, I, I can certainly agree that it's, it's. You know, as with anything government, it's, it's not the quickest process, but we're doing our best to, to get it completed and, and again, I think. The, the issues of, of the building being demolished by the previous owners, I think, are off the table because that's not going to move forward and. And the building is also protected through the demo delay ordinance, so if someone were to. Jump in here and buy it and run to the building department, no building permit for demolition would be issued. So I think there, there are protections in place and, and we're working as quickly as we can to, to try and get these procedures completed.
Thank you, Phil.
Thanks, Phil. Um I also see Bob McCarroll's on the line.